So with the adoption of the agenda. Forgot to ask, did we got anything we need to pull tonight? I forgot to ask you guys real quick, I'm sorry.
None for me.
Okay.
I want to pull. Four point oh one, number three, discussion.
Okay. And I don't need to pull the student progression plan, but I do got some questions in regards to the progression plan. But is, do we have that on here as an action item?
On consent.
Huh?
It's on consent.
Okay, so I do need to pull that for action, the student progression plan.
Seven point oh one.
Seven point oh one. Okay. No, I think that's it. Would you be able to answer a question about the dual enrollment articulation agreement? Okay, alright, no problem. No, it's not that one, it's the one with North Florida, but I can ask you that question later, I don't think we need to pull it. I mean, I can ask that question without having to pull it. I did need to pull personnel recommendations. I don't necessarily need to pull it, but I do got a quick question in regards to the personnel recommendation. I can ask that question right now if the board is fine with that, because it looked like it's just a correction. Is that okay with you guys, instead of me having to pull it?
I think you'd be better served by pulling it and discussing it at the appropriate time.
Okay, well, personnel recommendations, I need to pull that.
Is there one in particular?
Twelve point oh one, number...
Number one and number, no, number two and number... Number eleven. I really do just think it's an error, but I mean...
You're talking about the retirement resignation number two on twelve point oh one?
Yeah, the resignation.
Okay.
Number, just number two and number eleven. I really do think it's an error, but I mean, I don't... Okay, alright. That's all I have, so do I got a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, let me correct that and say, we pull item four point oh one, number three, and item seven point oh one, and then the personnel recommendations, number two and number eleven. So we're gonna pull those for discussion. Do I have a motion? Brunda, motion? Bunny, second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carry. So, again, no minutes, so... Okay, alright, so... Okay, so would that be for the last two meetings, or? Okay. Okay, alright, okay, alright. So next we'll have presentations. We have Ms. Beth Cabal with North Florida Medical. Betty Cabal, I'm sorry.
I've been called Betty, Betsy, Billy, I'll go by anything, so...
I just seen the first three letters, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Good evening. I want to thank you, I know last month you approved the MOU for us to continue services for the dental outreach. I was in Gadsden last month, so I couldn't be in two places at once. But since I was here all day working on our dental bus, doing a bunch of service and equipment, that's why I feel like I've been outside all day. And when I saw Laura earlier, I had a different shirt on, so it's been a hot day, I need this to say. But I wanted to share with you our numbers, and thank you again for allowing us to provide services for your students. And I met with Laura today, Ms. Gray, I should say, and we've scheduled services for October and then again in the winter, and then we'll be at elementary as well. So it's so nice to see both our wonderful principals here that are always a great support. So last year, including Taylor County Primary, Taylor County Elementary, and Steen Hatchie, we served over six hundred children. Two hundred and forty-five of those students were at moderate risk, which means they have at least three to five active cavities. Three hundred and nine of those children were at high risk, which meant that they had some type of pain or abscessed, or more than five cavities. We placed sealants on over two hundred and fifty students, and we provided cleanings for almost three hundred children, and fluoride varnish for almost all of the children. So with the new state removal of fluoride from water, I think we're gonna find an increase of active carries and much-needed services from us. So we're excited again to be providing services next year, and just wanted to give you the numbers and answer any questions that you may have for what we've done or what we're gonna continue to do. And my other two hygienists, they're over in Gadsden, and so they weren't able to be here tonight, but share their thoughts as well.
Do you see this much service in the other counties that you're in?
You mean that the number of students, we see, yes. So we cover Okaloosa County and Gadsden. So we cover, I've got thirteen different schools. And we were in summer school, we did almost six weeks of summer school. We did pre-K at Taylor Primary, and they were doing a reading or something, something that was... We did pre-K because everything, they were really focused on their summer studies, so we didn't want to interrupt them. But, you know, we still try to do as much service throughout the summer as well.
I guess my question is more like, how do we compare as far as the dental hygiene, you know, the cavities, the whatever?
Oh, as far as the high risk, this is a higher, they're probably a higher risk than any other, or other counties. Gadsden's probably our next, and then Okaloosa. So Okaloosa, we've been providing services for twelve years, just finished our twelfth school year. And then, I believe here, it's our, we'll start, we just finished our fourth year. And then Gadsden, we've been there six years. So we, I think the longer we continue to provide services, the lower risk will go down. However, like I said, with the removal of fluoridation water, I don't know if Taylor had it in their water, you know, fluoride water.
I don't think so. I don't think so. We, most of us are on well-watering.
On well-watering, okay.
But what I'm, I guess, so you file the insurance for this, and so it brings the cost down to the district as far as...
There's not any service to the district, so even if they don't have insurance...
Public kind of know that.
Yeah, so anyone who signs a consent form and permission slip, they don't, they don't, they don't earn charged anything. Now, we also provided services, which is a silver diming fluoride, which actually stops the decay. And there were almost fifteen hundred individual teeth that we put that on. So for us, that's game changer, because we saw children with higher, more pain and abscess, but being able to put the special fluoride on there that stops the decay has been really helpful. And we did hire a dentist, that's gonna be in Madison. I mean, our services, we just weren't able to get a dentist at Taylor Dental Center, but we've hired, so we're moving everything into a new building into Madison Dental Center. So we'll still have the healthcare center, but the dental part will be in Madison.
And I can shout out these ladies, Miss Benny, Miss Harris. If I'm bigging it down the hallway, they'll fall and step right beside me and just keep walking. If they have questions, like, they work in the hallways with our kids at times, they're amazing. They are, they are wonderful.
You're moving to the dental parts in Madison.
The dental, the, our actual brick and mortar building for Madison.
So that will be a separate building than any other up there? It's gonna, you're gonna be standalone by yourself?
And we already have a medical center, a health center up there, so now we'll have the medical, I mean, the dental.
Our children, if they need to follow up, can come there.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, we had some interesting times, because we, right after, I think it was right after the snowstorm, our unit wasn't plugged in, wasn't renterized like it should have been, but I was in charge of that. So when we brought it to Steen Hatchie first, I mean, we became real familiar with the ACE hardware there. I mean, we didn't have power, the battery wasn't working, the generator wasn't working. So we plugged in, and principal there, Mr. Gray, was wonderful. Is it Mr. Gray?
Gray.
Bray, Bray, I got it. So we had extension cords, and then by the time we moved it here, then we had issues, there was electrical, I've learned a lot about outside outlets, what plugs in, but Ms. Gray was great, we were in the hallway. So we did not, we try not to have any downtime. And when we're there, we're doing whatever we can to see those kids.
We appreciate you.
And they're, like I said, both their staffs are wonderful, their admin, so... And congratulations to Ms. Gray, so she's a new position, and she'll do great. Anything else, any other question?
For our fifth grade?
Yes.
Is there any need for Casey for sixth grade, or do y'all furnish that?
I'm sure there's a need, but I don't know if they go that far.
You don't go that far.
We don't go, I mean, just only because we're, we are just... Yeah, and if we can get them younger...
Two weeks in October, she was in office this week, today, trying to get it on the calendar. They're here for like two weeks in October, then like three or four weeks in February.
Wow.
So, and I mean, they're pulling the four-year-olds and the three-year-olds out into the hallway and doing all the things.
And we even go to the babies, I mean, if they've got a tooth in their mouth, we're in there putting fluoride on them, so yeah, we're...
Now, you guys cover this service area, but I'm assuming this is some other type of grant that you guys utilize? But I know the Health Department used to provide dental services years, some years ago, and I think that's where we would get those kids that was in middle and high school that needed to be seen, but they haven't had their dental program in some years now. But I guess it's, this specific funding is for K-5?
Well, we're with...
Or pre-K-5, I guess.
Well, it's not necessarily that, it's just that that's where the biggest impact is, that they, as far as for prevention and getting them earlier. And, I mean, they can certainly go, I mean, I know it's Madison, but it's just a matter, you know, trying to get, and the consent rates, the return for the older, older kids, even like fifth grade, it's hard to get them to return, you know, the consent form. So that's our biggest challenge, so if there's any suggestions on... But y'all have the Wednesday, you still have the Wednesday that goes out in the folder, which you're the only county that does that, my other two counties don't, they don't do that. So that works to where they have the folder with all the papers that go home, go home on that Wednesday. So that definitely... Yeah, I mean, working this, we know Wednesday, that those, we gotta get them to you by Wednesday, that they go home.
They have to get it to us by Tuesday afternoon, so we can be in teacher's hands by Wednesday morning.
But as far as the high school, I mean, if we were to add another dental bus, I mean, we could certainly look to expand, but, you know, we need more hygienists, more providers, and, because my team is... We're, we're tired. Today, I'm really tired of working on that hot bus. But no, we love what we do, and we really are fortunate that we can come over here and, you know, provide services, because it's so much needed here in this area.
Have you looked into, well, I think it's, what's the name of the, it's not TCC anymore, Cal...
Cal State College.
State College, Cal State College. Have you looked into their hygiene, hygienist program and recruit some of those people right out of the chute to help y'all?
We, it took us almost a year to get a hygienist hired for the one here in Taylor. To get, and we're looking for a hygienist in Madison, so if you know anyone that's looking for a hygienist.
I'm just saying, it could be recruiting for...
I mean, we do, we tried all the, and same with the dentist, we had a dentist, we had to close our center here because we couldn't get a dentist at the center, but the new one we recruited.
That might be something we need to look into, at Big Bend Tech, if we're getting dental. Since our massage therapy is gone, we could do the hygienist department. Like you need something else to, everybody's spread... But apparently, there's a big need in this area.
It is.
There's a big need in this area.
I know the other dentist, Morgan's old office is constantly looking for a dentist and hygienist.
Well, I know the feedback that we received from those dentists that were looking to relocate here, Madison versus Perry, or for Quincy, they, the... They wanted to either do Madison or Quincy, because Perry, I mean, and we had a brand new, we have a brand new facility. I mean, it's only a few years old, but it just, you know, looked, felt old, not old, but needed some uplifting into the community, yes, the community. Yes.
Yeah, that was something that was brought in when we were at the meeting with the Commerce, is what can the Commerce do to upgrade as people enter our county, what they see. And I understand what you're saying. And there's been a lot of work in that area, there's been a lot of old buildings tore down, so...
I mean, it's a wonderful community, and when we come here, we stay, you know, almost six weeks, you know, three nights for those six weeks. We're here at Hampton Inn is where, I mean, we know everyone there, and mamas knows this really well. I mean, luckily, they have a variation of menu, so we can eat something different besides pasta. But we love the community, I mean, so, and we've tried to portray that to those that, whether to move here or not. It's like, there's, there's a lot there in Perry, I mean, it's a quaint little town.
We're working on the downtown area too, trying to build it up, so... We appreciate you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, y'all have a good one.
You too.
Alright, next we have items of interest from the public. Do we have anybody that would like to come before the board? Alright, so we'll move on down to four point oh one, number three.
Okay, motion for discussion?
Motion, I mean, yeah. Brunda, do we got a second? Brunda, motion, do we got a second for discussion? Okay. Jeannie, seconds? Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to, this is, this was one that was added after the agenda was... So my question is, is it an emergency item? That needs to be done? And how long is it gonna take to get this? Well, I understand that this is a lease, a three-year lease, and of course, if anything was to happen to it during that time, it's, I guess, replaced or whatever, because it is a lease, right? Okay, and the funding is where? Just straight out of general fund?
So what, like, with this coming out of the general fund, what is the expense for this? Because it looks like you got three payments?
And that includes the logo, and that includes all the chalk, or a lot of the chalk, and a lot of the program, and then back, and somebody there to program? But, yeah, it does every sport, yeah.
What about, does, is there cancellation, cancellation clause in the contract?
There is, there is. If we go to turf fields, it'll go away.
If we go to turf fields, but if you don't...
But why would you terminate it?
No, I'm just asking you, is there a, what if it was not dependable? I'm just saying...
Well, they're gonna have to back it, or they have to replace it.
Okay, currently, we have a, some equipment that we paint it with, and our maintenance... Okay, and the cost analysis that Dan did, I guess, wasn't that the one that you did, Dan? Oh, I think shows that we're currently paying like fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars?
Plus chalk. Kind of like a wash, would you say?
Real, pretty close, he said.
The other thing about it is that the coaches can use it and do the fields anytime they want to, and keep them up to date. Right now, they rely on maintenance, and they know that it costs maintenance, time, and money to do it, so they don't call very much, and if we're super busy, a lot of times it doesn't get done the way they want it done. And this will give them the opportunity to keep the fields lined for practices at the middle school and the high school. And it also will do a better job than a person can do. The person's line hits something, it always, even if they have a string, it always takes them off course, and you just look down and you see the curves, and with this...
It does it with GPS?
And so the guy, the guy that's been doing this, he would be free up to do something else? Or is it just a contractor that's been doing it?
It's contractors sometimes, sometimes it's...
The maintenance thing.
But now, you still got to have somebody to man this.
Yeah, this takes about two hours versus about eight the other way?
It takes eight, about eight hours to do it the first time for our guys. You know, if they did it for lines, stay fresh, then they can do it in three and a half hours.
How long would it take with this?
With this, about three hours, and probably two and a half to three hours, and longer for doing the logo. Of course, it takes us a lot longer to do a logo, do a logo, probably an hour and a half.
So, well, we no longer, basically, you're saying, if we go to this, we no longer will be utilizing the previous contractor? Okay, and you said that maintenance have been doing some of this, so if the coaches step in, is this gonna turn into an extra hours issue?
I was told it was gonna start off being the ADs. Is that right?
So that'd be Jessie and Justin?
Well, it's kind of like a Roomba. So, I mean, if it's a Roomba for ballfield striping, it's, you mash a button.
But you've got to physically watch it, you can't just walk away from it.
I thought once you got it started, you could, you didn't have to stand there the whole time.
You could do something else, but you have to be there. You can't just walk off and go inside. You have to be there, like, you could be working with some more players and keep your eye on it.
Do we know where we at right now, Lacey, with these additional expenses far as general fund? Do we know where we at right now so far for the twenty-five, twenty-six year with the additional expenses for the general fund? I know Bunny asked when we was discussing some stuff that was gonna come out of mental health, but do we know where we at now with these additional expenses? Yeah, as far as the general fund. No, I'm not saying what percent we at, I'm saying, do we kind of got like an itemized list or something far as what's gonna be new fees that we're paying? Right, but it is gonna be additional expense of two thousand dollars. So that's what I'm saying, do we, do we have something right now, like a running total or anything? I mean, it doesn't seem like it's a big expense, but we're not even nearing to the year yet, so...
I think in liability, a little bit, it'll probably work its way out. When you've got a human being in charge and they're out there pushing something, there's that, always that liability, and that, you know, they can fall, they can trip, they can da-da-da-da. And so, I mean, I think in the long run, it'll be, it'll be a good thing to have. Most counties have them, we're, I mean, even Osilla has them, has one, so it's just...
I know Mayo doesn't, they still, they still use maintenance to stripe theirs. But dollar-wise, it literally is like an offset from...
So literally, if we go to this, are we committed to this for three years, and then three years, we're gonna reevaluate where we at? Okay. And you, for sure, we ain't gonna have to worry about this other contractor for these three years? Okay, alright.
And there's not...
You ready for a motion?
I have one more question. There's not any issue then with the athletic directors being... And I'm making that assumption, I mean, I guess there could be some delegation later to some coaches, but to their responsibilities.
They said it would be part of their supplemental, so that's...
But we don't... There is no supplemental for AD now.
There is for the middle school.
But you're just, I thought, I heard Jessie mention, he's the district-wide AD, that is not a supplement. I don't know what the question is, Ms. Carlton, if you want to ask it, I'm trying to answer it.
Okay, oh...
She's saying who gonna be responsible?
And if they designate it to a coach, is that, because we don't, in their supplement, it doesn't specify that they line the...
Our coaches have sometimes lined their own field. Or they play hair match, and it's a baseball field, and people... Fixing the baseball field on his own time. Most coaches take pride in their field and their, and their sport, and they care about it. I think it's always been that way. Now, I don't know, I've been a part of the discussion of who's this final, who's gonna be in charge of this, but I think that that should come from Jessie or whatever, but...
Well, I think somebody's gonna have to dictate when it goes to this field, when it goes to that field, and those kind of things.
That contradicts what we're trying to do, we're trying to save on employees and extra hours, so... Bringing up this maintenance, people to do things that really need to be done, not lining the fields.
Looks like they're gonna have a lot to do with it.
Well, I just, I think, I mean, it, it does seem like it washes itself out, but I am concerned if this later gonna become an extra hour issue, or if you're gonna try to add another supplemental, or if you're gonna try to say somebody's been doing it and they wouldn't have supplemental, because I'm just sorry, but here lately, that tends to happen. So, I mean, that, that would be my concern, but, I mean... Concrete information would be helpful, but, I mean, because it did come out of the blue, it wasn't on the agenda.
I know the coaches are doing a lot of, this coaching staff is doing a lot of extra stuff. That they're not getting paid, that's not on during their regular hours. So I would assume that their plan, especially decided as they are about getting it, they're gonna do this without extra hours. I mean, it's not gonna, it's not gonna be like pushing that paint machine in the ninety-degree weather. Simple and easy, it's gonna be of a pleasure, kind of, because you're seeing something that's... Makes you feel really good and proud.
And once it's set up, I mean, you can go back in and add another field, if you come up on another field, there may be some minimal cost there, but you do have a couple of what they call service calls built... costs built in that'll be used for that purpose to.
I thought you say on here it's already going to take care of all the fields. That's what Dan got on here.
I'm sorry?
Dan already has on here that is going to take up care of the softball, baseball, and Dorset.
I said if, if there, next year, if you want to add another field.
Oh, okay.
I mean, if there are other fields you wanted to add, you could.
Well, I mean, if it's in our lease, we could do what we want with it, right?
Well, we, we don't have the capability to quite program, right?
Oh.
Programming?
Yeah.
So, first of all, Phil and I, we're not familiar much about this. Lacy and I were like this much a part of it. The discussion we were a part of, we understand that there's so many, there's different packages. And with this particular package, you get three logos. And you get all this, so they program it based on the package that you choose. It will line every single field, it paints, all the paints included. Everything is.
Training. Training.
Training, all that's in there.
It does have some annual visits, don't it?
I think it was.
She's saying if we was to add something different than the three locations we got.
I just said, so you have another high school, you add another field. You could add, you have the capability to add other, like adding another facility.
Well, we'd have the same logo and it'd be the same size. We'd just take it over there one day and then the other day. They don't charge by the quantity. I mean, you're not going to change the logo, you're not going to change the lines.
But it's programmed by GPS, so you'd have.
Yeah, but I mean, it.
I mean, we couldn't do it. It has to be done by the, uh, company.
Well, I hope that's the problem we have one day.
Well, I know it says on here that we get so many visit from the people, so it seemed like that's, could be a conversation that could be had, right?
I think it's two.
Oh, okay.
But now, the first one doesn't count because, I mean, they have to do the initial setups, what I understand.
Okay.
But that was, that was my questions.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, get, um, any opposed? Okay. So, we're moving on. Real quick, um, I didn't pull number eight, I'm sorry, um, but I thought Ms. Sands would be here, but she's not. But quick question, these agreements, I don't know if Jill or Kiki can answer it, but.
What about seven point oh one, you asked Jill?
Oh, that's right, I don't skip past it, I'm sorry. Go back to seven point oh one. Number, I was asking about the student progression plan. Um, I seen on here, um, where, hold on, I think it's on page forty nine, where it's just designated alternative education at the, um, middle school? So are we still doing anything at the middle school far as alternative? I mean, whoever, I, I thought we weren't doing anything over there because I know when Mr. Dowell, pretty much when we shut down alternative at the Rock Building and it went to Casey, I thought we only had it over there for one year. But I noticed, I went back like the last two or three, um, progression plans and it seemed like we were specifying it at your school, at TMH, I mean, at the middle school. So I know we did it that one year, I think that was the, what, the twenty-two, twenty-three year?
The guys came in and worked with them.
We had it year before last, still in my school.
Okay, so that was the twenty-three, twenty-four year?
Yes.
Okay. So, I noticed that was in there, so I had a question about that.
So you're going to take it out?
Yeah, it's on page forty-nine, forty-eight, forty-nine. Well, I'm looking at the one you got on the gym.
Not on our copy, it isn't yet, Jill. You have a different copy than us. But that's okay if you can.
I mean, I can show it to you. Well, that's what I'm saying, that's not, that's not what was up here, so that's why I asked the question.
Do you want this one?
If that's what's on board docs.
So is there a reason why?
Okay, we can't.
We'll have to redo it.
We can't, we can't vote.
We can't approve that, then we're going to have to pull it.
It's got to be on board docs correctly before we can.
Somebody needs to either move to table it to the next meeting or postpone it and definitely to reschedule it.
Do you think you can get it corrected by the next meeting? We'll table it to the next meeting, I'll make a motion.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so next is, like I say, is just a quick question under, and I'm only asking a question because I know the last time when a lot of contracts was coming over, they were saying we was going to have to pay for these out of general fund. So are any of these that Ms. Sands are requesting, are these general fund?
For the record, are you at eight point oh one?
Yeah, eight point oh one, number four. I'm sorry, eight point oh one, number four.
That's, um, I D E A funding.
Okay, and eight point oh one, number five?
That is general fund.
Is this something we've always done?
I don't know about number five. I've never heard of that vendor name, so maybe it's listed as something different. Number six is, um, general fund and it's always been general fund.
Why do they have two different funding numbers?
It's, so the funding number, if it's a. It depends, like, I'm sixty-one hundred, if it's for students, is it used for teachers? If they, starting about the red book.
Okay, so there's no way to look at a number and know what fund it is?
If you always look at, if it starts with four-two-zero, it's always a grant fund. And if it starts with one hundred, it's always a general fund.
And a thousand is general fund as well?
And then the object, the function of the object, they're next, and that's what their red book comes with the notice.
So, do we know why there's interest to do this then? Number five, that's going to be under the general fund. I, I get you saying number six is something we've paid for, but since number five is something new, do we know why?
Well, I don't know if it's moved. I've never seen it everywhere.
It's every way.
So I'm wondering if it was sent. Wonder somebody sending it in wrong because I've never heard of that vendor name. And, uh, um.
I mean, the cost for it is only eighty-nine hundred, but, I mean, again, we're having to pay for more stuff under general fund that we hadn't been paying for.
Who approves this curriculum? Who does? Cameron?
Yeah, that's Cameron.
And what number four, Teach Town, that's used for students who are on access points. So they take alternate assessment. They have to have a different curriculum because they have access points, standards and benchmarks they have to meet.
So this don't say Teach Town, this says.
What about number four?
Oh, okay. Well, number five, she said was on the IDA, so I'm not concerned with that. Right, that's what I'm saying, I'm not concerned with that, I'm just concerned by what's being added to the general.
Unique, it's the wrong thing, it's unique, that was always been general fund.
Are you sure, because on this thing, it says every way?
It's got it coded wrong, we can't vote on it.
Vote is right.
The name on it, no, the name on this document says every way.
If you end up having multiple companies, it's a program they use for, sometimes it is.
It says every way.
Down there in the body.
It says.
Unique learning system, unique learning system.
Yes, that website is every.
Learning pathway for unique learning system. So we've been using that for a while?
We use them every year in general fund, always.
Eight thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars worth? It's number five you're talking about.
The curriculum for those students in special needs that have access points.
Right, okay.
So what is this?
Like the wrong hill is the ELA curriculum for K-five ELAs. They can't have the same curriculum because their standards are different.
Right.
So this is pretty much how y'all build a curriculum?
Yes, that's how, yeah, that's.
That's what I'm saying, is, okay.
Apparently that every way is a typo, it should be every way, is that correct?
No, they're saying it should be in.
I guess this is the parent company that owns it, the vendor name that we use in Skyler is N two Y. But that's why I didn't recognize it, I've never heard it called every way.
Is Everway Holdings LLC is a parent company of Everway LLC?
The quote, the quote lists the name as Everway, not every way.
Not with a Y.
Not with a Y.
I've never heard that vendor name. We always call it N two Y, so that's why I wasn't sure what that was.
So are we sure we're talking about the same thing and not something different?
The quote that is on board notes, that it is N two Y, in the detailed description.
So should we modify the agenda to say N two Y instead of every way? Well, the, the quote is made out by every way.
The correct vendor name in the minutes, and then when you all approve the minutes, that will correct whatever.
Every way is who you're paying.
Yeah, on this, um, W nine is saying every way.
Yeah, your, your invoice.
Skyler's N two Y that the check goes to, it's like Cameron's, but N two Y as the vendor.
The invoice says every way. When you pull.
Well, that's what this W nine say every way.
But if that's the case, they got to go send in W nine.
They got one right here.
Yeah, yeah, this W nine is attached.
So compare, if you will, compare the two W nine numbers to make sure it's the same. Go up. Oh, I'm sorry. Go up somewhere.
Ever, E V E R W A Y, no Y, and it's not every, it's ever.
You normally mail it to.
Is this company or vendor going to invoice before the next board meeting?
This is a quote here, this is not an invoice.
I wouldn't think so.
Then the board may want to simply table it so that this identity of the vendor can be corrected and accurately placed on the agenda.
The only issue is they won't start our programs without board approval.
It's just a matter of the, they sent a quote under ever way, E V E R W A Y, but in the description of the quote, it's got the name y'all are familiar with. They've got a new W nine.
Five fifty? The box five-five-zero?
Post office is a twenty-four, it says to.
Twenty-four oh one, Sawmill Parkway.
Week ten dash eleven, Huron, Ohio. So that's, there's a contact on there, Stephanie Moss.
The address, the address is different.
Yeah, I say we just table it.
We have N two Y listed as a DBA.
But now Jill's saying we, we need this Monday, right?
For our kids starting school.
Well, we need to find the correct information.
Just put it like this, if the, the VIN numbers are the same, you're one hundred percent sure it's the same vendor that you've always been using, they've just changed a little bit of the way they, they, they bought out by somebody or whatever. And then we're good to go. They changed their name.
Thank you, Coach Popple.
So you need to make sure your vendor address is changed or they won't get the payment. It's, it's on there.
So can I get a motion to what need to be?
And say this is a, they're changed, we need it updated, so I'll just get Cameron to send it through.
Yeah, it's on the board docs, the W nine's right there, so.
So I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Wait a minute, you got to, you got to address the name.
Well, the W nine is correct according to Cameron.
But it should be ever way.
Well, that's a typo on here, but.
Take off the Y.
Yeah, we did do that already.
Technicalities.
But in our packet, the attachment, everything is correct.
Okay, now, you just had a question, we don't, we shouldn't even, um, be voting on it, shouldn't we? She just had a question. We didn't pull them.
It was pulled.
Yeah, it was pulled. No, I, we didn't pull this.
So let it go? If it wasn't pulled for discussion, then you're not taking separate action on it. It was approved by virtue of the consent.
Then I rescind my motion.
Yeah.
But it does need to be changed to ever way.
Yeah, the typo, it was a typo. Take out the Y, we'll be good.
That's something that you're going to have an audit criticism on, if it's not corrected, the board has approved the expenditure to Everway, a subsidiary of N two Y, essentially, is that right, Lacy?
Say that again?
The board is approving at item number five, Ms. Sands' request to approve the contract with, it should be ever way, E V E R W A Y. So we're all agreeing that's a typo. But through all this discussion, there's been a determination that that company was previously known or paid as an invoice by N two Y, the corporate entity, right? Okay, so the board has approved it by virtue of adoption of the agenda and it being a consent item, if there's any changes that need to be made, then that would be done in your department, presumably.
Can we just make sure that's in the minutes?
Yes.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you. So the next item is twelve point oh one, the personnel recommendations. And my question is, do we need a motion to discuss this?
I thought you already did that.
We did that.
You pulled the personnel recommendation, twelve point oh, number two and number eleven.
Yeah.
What I wrote down.
You, you're the one that did it, so.
Yeah, so do we need a motion?
We've already done that.
Okay, all right.
To discuss.
All right, so for number two, is, you got resignation, but then when you go down and hear you requesting hours for the whole school year. Okay, but I didn't see her name on our sub list or anything. Is it? I didn't see it on.
I think this one's listed.
Okay.
The other one was one that, um.
It was on last, last times?
I'll check real quick because I think, I think that sub list that came over was from the twenty-second. I don't think you had anything last week on your sub list.
That's a short timeframe from when she resigned, seven twenty-nine.
Yeah, your main list, Kiki, that was twelve pages, was from the twenties.
Timeframe, she resigned on the twenty-ninth, today is the fifth or sixth or whatever it is. So you're only talking five days.
Yeah, you don't have her on your sub list.
She did. If she, she couldn't be on the sub list if she was working and she was resigned on the twenty-ninth.
She wasn't working, but she just officially put her resignation in that day.
The twenty-ninth.
But I would talk to Sandy and have her add her to the, she should have already been, so it's just an error.
Yeah, she's not on the, you didn't have a sub list that came over on the twenty-ninth? You had one on the twenty-second, but she's not on that. No, you had the longer list, which I think most of your appointments was on that list from the twenty-second. So Angela, how would we need to do number eleven? Is it? I mean, she's not on the sub list, but there's a request for. Yeah, and Kiki said she needs to be on the sub list because she's applying for her temporary rate? She's going to be a long-term sub.
She's not appointed though.
Not currently appointed, so you can't approve extra hours for somebody. Not currently appointed, so you can't approve extra hours for somebody who's not currently appointed.
But will correct that to the night, on the nineteenth board meeting, add her added to the sub list and then put the extra hours on that on August nineteenth?
Can I ask that we, I know last meeting you asked that if there was some that come over because of the nineteen, um, the due to the time. So I mean, I know this individual has been working for us, so is this one of those situations where Reggie could call us, Angela, or does it?
I have four. Okay, I know we called Thursday night about.
And those four are on, they was on your appointment in your sub list?
I have another list going that I had spoken to him to talk to you about, but he's not.
Did he, did he not ask us about this one Thursday?
No. No, they're on here.
Just for the record though, for sunshine law, this calling by Reggie, Mr. Wentworth, is a courtesy to let you all know and to explain why something might hit the agenda after it's actually put in, into effect. So let, let's just make that clear. And he certainly has the right to do that and advise the board of his intentions and getting these positions filled at this pace. But just to understand and for the record, it's not an outside conversation with multiple board members.
Right.
Well, I'm just gonna go on the record and say when nobody on the phone with me but me and the superintendent. So to address any sunshine concerns, I don't recall anybody being on the phone when I talked to them. So, um, just make sure. So my question is, she resigned on the twenty-ninth, you're saying, but it hit the August fifth agenda. So when did it come along? I guess it came along between the twenty-ninth that you decided you was.
You know, I, I always heard the bill, this is a certain. Um, when they, you know, when they, when they don't have a certified, you know, we, we go. And she hasn't obtained her degree.
Mm-hmm.
At the end of last school year. So she wants to apply her temporary certificate and based on her degree to see if she's eligible, you know.
Kiki, do you have a statement of eligibility yet? I mean, do you even have where she's applied? Okay, you do have that.
She's not going to get an SOA quite yet. She's got to take this thing. So that's why she needs to be a sub.
Okay, so she's planning to just challenge the test versus.
How every degree is. Oh, no, no, no. So, uh, so her degree does not give her a temporary. It's not for like.
Okay, so she just got a challenge, okay.
So you have to go pass the subject area exam.
So basically that's why you're putting her on long-term sub until she obtain what she, okay, all right.
So we just need to delete the extra hours, is that correct? At this point, or table it, whatever's the pleasure of the board.
Let's table it for next meeting.
The next meeting is not till the nineteenth, correct?
Sounds like they're gonna come back with a retroactive request for some extra hours based upon the glitch of not doing the appointment as a long-term sub. Is that right?
So I would make a motion that we.
Well, I'm, I'm just a little concerned because, um, these ones that we're appointing tonight, technically they started on the first. So I'm assuming Ms. Taylor probably started on the first. So I mean, how are we gonna address that, Angela?
He'll have retro date. That's what I just said. It seems as though they're gonna bring it back on the nineteenth to retroactively award those extra hours once they add this person to the sub list and she's appropriately an employee. Is that correct?
But is she's qualified to work before then? That's my question.
Well, that's why I will have the superintendent reach out to each of you if that's what he recommends. For the sub list, you know, we can put that extra hours back on the nineteenth. That's okay.
So I say we table it tonight and then I guess the superintendent could address it.
You're wanting to table the item of.
I mean, that's what Brunda motion, Brunda motioned, but.
I wanted a motion. I was afraid it hadn't been appointed.
Yeah.
So that's the pending motion. It's a motion to table that item to the nineteenth. So was there a second and?
I second it. All in favor?
I, I just, again, like, I mean, I'm good with it. I'm just wondering, you know, how do?
It's just simple. You can't give her extra hours till she's appointed and that's what we're trying to accomplish. So we need to.
So technically on the next agenda would be the appointment as, on the sub list, retro and then the extra hours.
But what about like regular sub time working? Because I mean, schools start on the eleventh.
If he gets approval from each of you.
Individually.
It's no different than these others that we.
Okay, so basically the request from eight, for the extra hours would come the next board meeting. And then between now and then, we need to hear from the superintendent. Does that work? Not for the extra hours, but just being a long-term sub.
Yes. Extra hours will be on this. You've done that in the past. There's been a tacit approval by superintendent contacting, not only the superintendent, but other superintendents, contacting you each individually to get a tacit approval to put someone to work under these circumstances because of the time constraints. And then bring it at the next board meeting. So that's essentially what I understand you're asking right now.
Okay, so all in favor, because I, I did hear a motion already. All in favor? Aye. So opposed? Nay. I meant so carry. I'm sorry, not no nay, so carry. All right, so that addressed everything with the agenda, so we're down to items of interest. The superintendent is not here. So do we just need to, do you got anything?
I do not have anything.
Okay, Angela don't have anything. He's not here, but did he give a report or something? Okay, all right, Brunda.
Okay, um, I just wanted to mention that with school starting Monday, I still would like to see some bus routes before Monday.
Not in the.
Say what?
Bus routes.
Bus routes.
And not on the website? I thought she had already sent it to me.
There's not a none on the main page.
Can I email them the bus routes from Ms. Wendy that will be posted?
This one right here, that's on the website, twenty-five, twenty-six bus routes.
Where's it?
Transportation, bus routes.
Yeah, they're on the website that I'm saying you, so we re-read the policies. These new policies are kicking us. So, uh, when we had entered into the policy yesterday on bus routes.
Oh, I see it now.
That's.
It's on there.
Oh, yeah. They gotta be, they gotta be.
Board approved. Board approved. They need to be.
And I don't, and they were, that I know of, I've never seen them board approved. That's because I guess it's a new policy, right?
I think we've approved.
They have been approved previously.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's what we tried to ask last week.
So how are we gonna handle that? How are we gonna handle this?
Well, they're on the website.
But I'm just saying, how are we gonna prove it? How can they be on the website if they're not approved?
I've never done that. I mean, that, that's what I'm saying. I don't know who turned those in to be board approved, if you said they've been done in the past. We looked. Anyway, um. I got the list today because I needed it in a document form and, um, I didn't want to change anything else on the board agenda. But I do know that that's what the policy said, so.
Would, would they be in the paper Friday? I guess it's Friday, Angela? Without approval?
Well, we published the school start time also, so.
So. Be retroactive. That's, that's, that was all I had. Yeah.
All right, Jeannie?
Um. I think I am, I think I'm good. Honestly, I would like to know if the principals had anything that they wanted to share with us, though. Shelby, anyone?
I want to give a shout out to Enrique Villamens and Blake Morgan. They came and pressure washed the playgrounds at the primary school Saturday out of the goodness of their heart.
That was sweet.
Yes, that's very nice.
We have a great community.
Yeah.
I hate, we don't, people don't like the way we look.
I would like to say, last week when I was complimenting my teachers for working pre-planning.
In the heat?
I was not complaining about no air. I was complimenting my teachers for working.
Right, right.
No, I, I've worked in classrooms with no air. I know how bad it is. I will complain for you. It's horrible.
But they know, they know that we have the air off. They knew coming in that that, that was, that was not. Why I made the statement I made.
Well, I'm, I, I think that we need to, next year when that starts happening, we need to talk, call Dan and say turn the air conditioner on.
Well, we need to call Lacy first to see if we can pay for it.
Can, can we get Dan to tell us about this a little bit?
Oh, Dan, these, Helene, um, you got some items up here from regarding Helene damage.
Yes. We do. Looks like most of it's been completed.
Well, there's a lot of fence work still for. Local fence. Most of it's small fence work. Has changed a lot of posts out, used the same, uh, same fence for it and, uh, it's one of the main things, the press box structure that we're talking about replacing the whole, the whole, uh, the whole beams and support on the post. But those, the engineers that hooked in, new engineers that we hired to look at it, uh, didn't agree with that and wrote a plan.
Do you have pictures?
The supports that we already have. And just to tighten up the structure in the back. That would be sufficient.
Okay.
So how much of that thirty thousand dollars is, goes to him versus going to? Yeah, that is kinda, yeah. Yeah.
Have we gotten any more payments from? No.
Now, are these things that's gonna be covered under FEMA or us?
We don't want those till we get our money, whether they're a couple. But.
We've submitted them.
Okay.
Probably two thirds of these will be covered under FEMA. There's some, some of them stretched back to Adelia. There's about two of them stretched back to Adelia. We thought they were gonna be covered under the insurance and they never got captured under FEMA and so, uh, they have to pay for out of pocket.
Can you tell me which ones those are?
Example is, uh, the, uh, transportation, uh, transportation fuel canopy. Never, never captured under FEMA. FEMA will give you a certain amount of time. Captured, if you're captured, then.
You pay for it.
So that comes out of our insurance fund? No, that comes out of our, not our insurance fund.
Yeah, that means the.
That come.
Come out the general fund, right?
Out of pocket. And what's our deductible?
I don't know. I left it to the councilman.
It's a percentage, but I don't. How is percentage stuff?
Other one is, is the covered roof at Hail County Elementary. Or the roof. I had no idea that, that the front walkway roof was not covered under, under, did not meet the document and all of that. Part of the whole, whole roof system, but it's not each building and each one at its own, so.
So it's not covered either?
That did not get captured. Those, I think those are the two main challenges. I think it's captured.
So about eighteen thousand?
Eighteen thousand.
That comes, gonna, it's gonna come out of the general fund?
Yes, ma'am.
And you, you have that in your budget, Lacy?
I think she resigned on the twenty-ninth.
So we're about up to twenty-two.
Pretty much everything else is captured under, under FEMA.
So for Helene, our out-of-pocket expense, you're saying is about twenty-two thousand?
Yeah, yeah. We can get everything back. Get everything to them and, and they have no reason to leave if they won't because we walked around with them as long as.
Hey, Jeannie, I'm sorry.
Said she was through.
Oh, it's my turn?
Yeah.
Just thank y'all for coming tonight. Other than that, I look forward to school starting and got a grandson coming to see you in the morning. I'm excited about that. Um, and I'm seeing a lot of good things happening, a lot of the, I'm just so excited about the football team. It's unreal. But, um, I think we get to play. Did we play live vote last year? Finley's done gone. Did we play live vote last year?
Yeah, we do.
We get to play them again this year?
Yeah.
Will they come to us this year, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay. Our first game is like a scrimmage like with Mayo and then our second's Fort White. And then after that, we're on the road, so.
Mr. Anderson, are you gonna do radio announcing?
Yeah. Oh. All righty, that's all I have.
Okay, so I just got, um, again, thank you guys for coming tonight. I did enjoy getting to see some of the pictures from Friday. Looked like we had a packed house for the ceremony on Friday. I seen, looked like we had two of our cheerleading programs there and looked like we had some of our band members there. I don't know what other organizations was, um, ROTC, okay. Um, so that looked really, really nice. Um, so I'm excited for the school year. I know this, teachers are back. I know we got students getting schedules and everything this week. We're getting to meet their teachers and are starting to get phone calls. So I mean, we're right here at the gate. I just do, I want to express the concern. Um, it seemed like, well, I know these last few meetings have been back to back, but it does seem like, you know, um, the items on the agenda are chang, are changing. So, um, there's a concern for that. And then like with these, some of these things that need to be approved by the board, I just would like for us to get better with that because I mean, it kind of put pressures on us as a board trying to get prepared for the meeting and make sure we can come and approve what needs to be approved. But then when we hit that y'all are in a bind, then it, it puts us in a bind. And so a lot of times you guys have way more knowledge of, you know, these annual things. Y'all have way more knowledge of what's coming to us before we get it. So I mean, it just would be beneficial if there could be a less error as possible when it comes to the agenda and what needs to be approved and what nots to be approved. But other than that, like I say, I'm excited for the school year to get started and everything and, um, just go bulldozes, so. Oh, the penance ceremony. The penance ceremony was very nice. Um, congratulations to those ten students, right? Oh, it was eleven. Okay, to those eleven students. Yes, it seemed like a lot of those students, I noticed that was, had not too long graduated from the LPN program. So I think that is speaks volumes. So I think that is speaks volumes to what our college is doing in the area and providing these continued opportunities for our students. So that was just very nice, again, I notice, I always recognize the people that come from different careers and they transition over, but just to see that they're continuing to grow in this new path. So they have pivot well, but it's just good to know that we can offer them that opportunity here. So congratulations to those students, it was a well-attended event, it was very well-attended. And so congratulations again to those students and just your staff and the school that puts a lot of hard work into that program. And even just seeing the students that, you know, are interested in that program, they seem like they attend the program well. And they're just excited for, you know, their opportunity that's coming or when they're gonna get an opportunity, so congratulations, Ms. McCall. And again, it's standing next to your team, 'cause it, it really was a beautiful event, so that's all I have.
How many more got signed up for this year? All you can do? Do you, did you have a walk-up song? I couldn't remember what yours was.
It didn't start till I was five.
Okay. We got, we got to start playing when y'all come in here. I loved it, I think that was fun.
It was.
Y'all should have a party with, not, without the cheerleaders, without the band, without that, just the teachers. Have a party and do your walk-up song, and do some music, and just hors d'oeuvres and dancing, and just have a good old time.
I think there's still the scheduled, Casey, you got something scheduled tomorrow at your school, right? Right, the B celebration, and then I think Reggie still has some ceremony planned for the eighth this week, right? With Superintendent Russell Hughes coming into town. Okay, so if we don't have anything else, do I got a motion? Brunda's motions. Jeannie's seconds, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So carry.